Thank you. We've called a order to the meeting of the City Council Planning Commission of April ninth, twenty four. We have a real call. Commissioner Fields?
Present.
Commissioner Justky? Commissioner Stoski?
Present.
Commissioner Gray?
Here.
Commissioner Buckbinder? Mr. Kamkar?
Present.
Chair Sizer?
Here.
Okay, my name is Alan Sizer. I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission of approval of the minutes of March twelfth. Has everyone had a chance to review minutes? Are there any corrections? Commissioners? Nothing? You have motion?
With approval of the March twelfth, so I commission minutes.
A second?
Second.
We have motion and a second. Can we have a look before you vote? Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Stoski?
Aye.
Commissioner Gray?
Aye.
Commissioner Buckbinder?
Aye.
Mr. Kamkar?
Aye.
Chair Sizer?
Aye.
Director Eastwood, do you have any communications agenda modifications or postponements to notify us of?
Chair Sizer, no agenda modifications or postponements. We'll receive some information with Commissioner Kamkar to speak to the ad hoc committee. You'll receive that, and of course, I'll be referred to during his presentation, but nothing additional.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. White. All right, we'll open for all requests. This is a point in our meeting where any member of the public may address the commission on an item that is not on the agenda. They speak up to five minutes, but the planning commission may not take any action today. Is there anyone who would like to speak either in the chamber or online? On a non-agenda item? Nobody online? Okay. I'll close that portion. We'll move on to meeting. Before we start with our regular agenda items, I want to provide some information on how we will be conducting the meeting for each item. For each item, I'll first introduce the item and ask for a staff presentation, after which the commissioners may have some questions for staff. After that, we will open the public hearing and first ask the applicant to speak if it's applicable, if they're here, followed by any other members of the public. We will first have any public speakers physically present speak, and then anyone attending. Members of the planning commission may have questions for the applicant or any of the public speakers. Once we've received all public testimony, we'll close the public hearing and the commission will then have discussion and a motion and decision based on the nature of the item. Before we start on the items, commissioners, do you have any disclosures regarding the items on the agenda tonight?
I have walked around and through and by the site for the
Reset?
For item three.
Item three. What's on?
The one, it's behind the Del Brother project. I've walked past like almost by it on my way here every time. So I've visited the site.
Okay. Visit it. Doctor? Mr. Kamkar?
No. Visited the second site.
Commissioner Stoski? Okay, I visited the Grace Avenue site, and I happened to bump into one of the owners and had a brief conversation with her, introduced myself, and we had a very nice conversation. She actually asked me if they should be here tonight, and I told them it's totally their option to attend if they want. And that's the only thing I have. Okay, so first item. PLN two oh two four dash twenty seventeen ninety six Grace Avenue, public hearing to consider request public hearing to consider request of Ramen Juhar on behalf of Tillman Record Record to allow the construction of approximately five hundred thirty seven square foot second story addition to an existing single family residence with a reduction to the second story side yard setback from nine and a half feet to approximately five feet three inches. The application under consideration includes a site architectural review permit. File PLN two oh two four dash twenty. Staff is recommending that this project be deemed categorically exempt under SEQA. Planning Commission action is final unless appealed in writing to the city clerk within ten calendar days. Project planner on this is Larissa Holman. Larissa? Okay.
Thank you. The item before you is a site and architecture review permit to allow the construction of a second story addition with setback to existing dwelling. Project decision committed for the fact currently developed with existing two story, single family dwelling and generally surrounded by other single family dwellings. The proposal seeks to extend the existing second story through the construction of an addition as seen in the proposed elevations. The addition would continue the second story and extend over the existing garage. The city allows a second story addition with a reduced setback through the approval of a site and architecture review permit. In review of the application, the planning commission should review the project's attention to privacy, scale, mass, architectural design, and neighborhood integration. Is designed to match the existing building using the same materials for roofing, siding, and windows. And this approach ensures that it will fit the existing context of the Grace Avenue neighborhood. The addition is recessed from the first story and maintains the required front, rear, and street side setbacks in accordance with the Campbell Municipal Code. Furthermore, the placement of windows, there are two windows placed here within the proposed bedroom. These are aimed at the portion of the adjacent facade that does not contain any existing windows, therefore minimizing any privacy concerns. Furthermore, on the adjacent facade where there is an existing window, the proposed window on the proposed addition is a clear story window. So that means that it is positioned six feet above the finish floor, thus further minimizing any privacy concerns. Finally, the addition is positioned towards the front half of the property, therefore minimizing any potential sight lines into the neighboring properties. For these reasons, the Site and Architecture Review Committee recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving a site and architecture review permit, PLN twenty twenty four twenty. I can now take any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you, Larissa. Why don't we start this side?
Commissioner Fields? I'm going to ask similar questions I ask in the meeting, just with everyone here. How many other homes in this neighborhood have sort of done this similar thing and had to go through this whole process?
In the context of the Grace Avenue neighborhood, I didn't look at other properties that had gone through a site and architecture review permit to have a second story addition. It wasn't very common. However, if you look at the neighborhood, many of the surrounding single family dwellings do maintain a second story or two story, uh, single family dwellings. And so for that reason, this proposed addition would mirror the context of the surrounding.
And so how did those homes have that and this home needs to go through this process?
Question. And so the answer is maybe two parts. This house needs to apply for a site and architecture review permit to allow for the reduction inside setback. As you can see from the elevations, where the proposed second story addition will be, there are a second story setback, less than the otherwise required nine and a half feet. And so this property would have been able to simply apply for a building permit if they were to maintain a nine and a half foot setback to the second story. And then the other question is if there are existing properties within the neighborhood that do maintain this similar setback pattern, it is possible that they were built prior to the establishment of certain residential development standards. This house was built, believe sometime in the early sixties, so therefore, at that time, the city's development standards were different than they are today.
Can I ask something about this? That neighborhood, which is like the furthest east neighborhood, like on the other side of the league, has that always been part of Campbell? Or was that somehow annexed? Do we even know that?
I could find that information and let you know. I don't have that. I was part of
Just wondering, we've had instances where that has happened in other parts of the city, and that the homes were built on standard of San Jose or the town. So I was wondering if maybe that was the reason.
It's a possibility. A lot of portions of the city were annexed over time. We could consult with us to determine exactly what they are.
And my last question, sort of a broader one. I know this, this is somewhat unique to this neighborhood as it relates to the permitting. As we look at single family housing's objective standards, do we have any early thoughts on how we'd address setbacks more broadly? Like, like we're sort of making an exception in this case, and there's, you know, the rules as they apply to this neighborhood. I'm just curious, like more broadly, how might this fit in how we're looking at setbacks for single family homes?
So the approval of this permit process is through a site and architecture review permit, which is discretionary by nature. And to introduce objective standards, you would have to you would have to create standards that allow this in certain instances. And I don't think that we're looking at doing that as part of our update, but if that's something interesting to do, then good.
Just gonna add, um, it's on the long-term work plan to look at single family neighborhoods. There's a lot in front of it. So at some point. Commission will note, you'll see a rash of these that you had on the floor. There's one coming, so to speak, questions might come along. Why do we see projects of this type? So I'd say noted and, you know, to that part of the work plan, look at efficiency measures. They had any they could put in record, so could bring it to the planning commission, but streamline the process rather than directly to the planning commission would be the technique to minimize having to have hearings for that things.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Commissioner Stoski?
So any setback that's requested beyond the city standards is required to go through the same process, or is it? So there's two processes. You could seek a variance, which a variance would be an exception to a development standard. That would be a process that appeared before the planning commission. This is a unique instance that is written into the Campbell Municipal Code that allows for second story additions that are seeking a reduction in side, interior side setback to be heard before the planning commission. So if they wanted to further, they reduce if they wanted to seek a proposal like you see here that shows the second story side setback as being about five feet three inches, which is what they're proposing, as opposed to the nine and a half feet, they would have to apply for a site for the second story.
And I guess if it was an ADU, though, would not would it still be?
ADUs have separate development standards that contain outside of the single family residential development standards. Use the development standards are a little bit more safe.
Commissioner Buckbinder?
I think on what Commissioner Field said, um, we should be thoughtful about it. We're getting a lot of discretionary questions that all seem to be well, as we're standing something here, passing it through, we should see about bumping, to be proved down bumping. Especially if we have seen more involvement and applications. Anything to ask? Just got to sit.
Larissa, I can ask the same question I asked just our last meeting, and I guess it's still foggy by my and you were the staff person at the other item, which is the exact same item. So if the neighbor next door did object to the placement of the windows, if it was a privacy issue, if they really were pretty close to each other and and they said, man, this is really bad. Then what happens? What do we do? What's our, would the staff, would the staff recommendation be the same after talking to both neighbors saying, well, you know, we just can't get over this. It's just going to be an issue, but I think we still approve it. What will they do? In theory.
Unfortunately, we don't have this one size fits all answer to that's the question. To evaluate on a case by case basis, to the extent of what are the privacy concerns? How could they be mitigated? What does the, what does the proposal look like? What do the existing conditions look like? So unfortunately, I don't have one size fits all answer. You know, your staff could always work with the applicant with adjoining property owners to find out what the core issue is.
They would do that.
Process.
Yeah, I'm going to ask you just one more, one more time, just Commissioner Stoski's question, and I wasn't quite sure. Again, maybe there's no bad answer, but for any deviation of any of our standards, is a review before the planning commission inquire?
Um, so Yeah, through variance, which
Or through, but it's still the same.
We need to define things for variance that are different, the site and architecture.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I also need clarification. So I understood that there are methods, one was variance. But if that code was not written, if this procedure was not written in our code, then there would have it would be one way, it would be the variance. In this case, because it is written in a code that you could reduce the side setback, then there's that second avenue which this project is using.
That's correct.
That's my question. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, um, I just have, uh, this kind of a housekeeping thing, uh, two things. Uh, just for my edification, maybe other commissioners, um, the process for informing neighbors. Is there a radius, like three hundred feet or something?
Three hundred feet is correct.
Okay, and a notification is done?
So there's a couple different ways. So at project intake, there is something called a courtesy notice, which is sent out to a three hundred foot radius to property owners. Which describes the project and its base stage, so there might be potential revisions where the proposal might evolve over time. But that just shows the initial proposal. At time of public hearing, so for this planning commission meeting, there was another three hundred foot notice sent. Because the plans did not change, it was the same depiction on the postcard. And in addition to that, their item was noticed application as well.
And there's no process for, like, for the immediate neighbor to get a confirmation that they received a notice and they understood or anything like that. So we don't, we don't take another step to goes, well, this is the neighbor right here that has, that would have concern on this particular one. There's that one of the facts. We don't do another extra step to say, well, like we should, like they can make sure they got the notice and understand.
Correct. We send out those notices and that's the extent.
So we just assume that they get it. Take actions, they will. Okay. And the only other thing is, is, you know, I actually look at the drawings. So AO two, the drawing AO two. I don't know if you could find that one. I'm not quite sure what page it's on. It's, it's, uh, it's, it's a drawing of the layout. Is that it? Okay, so at the bottom left corner, it says that can we pull that up a little bit? Is it AO two? So this, this looks like the second story, like all the bedrooms, right? But it says at the bottom that's the main level. Is that just an error?
Yes, and that's something that was actually brought to my attention from the building official. He was conducting his review, and so as, as discussed with the applicant, he prepared a separate exhibit that had the second story level, although at that point, we decided it wasn't too important to include as part of this. But yes, this is the donation of the second
It's confused me.
Okay.
I was thinking, they're going to make all the bottom level bedrooms now. It's like, but there's nothing in there. And so, and then I came to realization that was just probably an error in the identification.
Noted further in the staff report, those changes to, you know, first story and to the second story as well, which is an extension with addition of new floor area with minimal changes to the interior.
All right, fine. That's all I have. You have one more question?
Commissioner Kamkar? Thank you. So the witness, he said the notice were filed, I was from the justice, but you was mail. You mailed the notice. It is not a email?
Oh.
It's postcard.
Correct. It is a, a physical mail notice.
And then, um, the second question is, it doesn't matter whether that three hundred foot passes the jurisdictions boundary, meaning if it goes into San Jose or the sky, so it's still, they still get a copy of the postcard, right? Even if they're not Campbell residents?
Yes, I have nothing I could to distinguish jurisdictional ones. Any other questions? Okay, I guess we'll move to any, anyone, the applicant or anybody else that has a question, I'll open it up. Do we have anybody who wishes to speak? This is the applicant or the architect here who would want to speak. Yes, now?
Yes, hi. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Yes, hi, this is, this is Ramen. I'm the architect of the project. Thanks for having us and reviewing our project. No comment. Obviously, I just wanted to make sure that I show myself and mention that I'm on the meeting. So we appreciate all the inputs and all the notes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, so I guess we'll, we'll just close that and move to discussion by the commission while we start with Commissioner Buckbinder.
Sure, sorry. I don't have any objections to this. I try and imagine people complaining about privacy issues. Hopefully, if you've sent a notice, they've complained, I don't see an issue.
Yeah, no, that, that, there's no problem with this, with this project. I think it's pretty straightforward. But I do think there were a couple, I did have a couple of thoughts, a couple of good ones, I think. And getting to Commissioner Sizer's question, and I actually do think it makes sense. In this case, we know that there's the one neighbor that would possibly have a problem. So can we confirm that that neighbor got the postcard? It doesn't seem like that's asking too much to avoid any kind of issue there. You know, we don't know if it's a renter, if it's the owner occupied, I guess, so
We sent it out.
That's one thought, yeah. No, no, we definitely sent one, but, you know, sometimes a postcard will get thrown out with the junk mail. You know, I don't know. It's just maybe go on an extra step that's unnecessary. But it's a thought, and, you know, it came to my mind when Commissioner Sizer asked the question. And, you know, on the bigger question, and I know that, I think we've all been united in this, they were really all in favor of these objective standards to try to get away from discretion, et cetera, et cetera. And in this case, you know, I think a ministerial review for, you know, for the design and the scale is something that you can count on. I mean, you know, our planning director, maybe development director could, could do the job of a bigger entity like us. But I guess, you know, when you get to the privacy issues, sometimes they're a little more involved and, and I guess that's the idea, is sometimes you want a bigger group to maybe take that, you know, these are kind of subjective decisions. So, uh, but yeah, I think, you know, ninety-nine percent of the time, you know, it's pretty straightforward and quick review would be, would be fine. Not to make the homeowner go through the steps, but, you know, there's always those couple of issues, and I think that's why they have these steps. So I guess you got to be a little careful what you, you know, what you're going to take away in terms of the review. So just a, just a thought in my mind, but this project, perfectly fine, no problems. Thank you.
I also think it's pretty straightforward. I don't see a privacy issue.
I'm also supportive of moving forward with the project.
Definitely supportive of the project, just like enough of what Commissioner Gray said. I really wish this was ministerial and we find a way to do that when it gets there on the work plan. Because I feel like in this commission, ideally, we're talking about the hard stuff, where there is an issue with subjective that we need to discuss and, you know, things like this. There's, there's nothing that's subject, there's nothing that hard. And if it could be appealed so that we could talk about those, like, that's what I'd prefer to use this time for, especially now being on the Sark and seeing so many of these, like, they come to that, they wait two more weeks, they come to here. Sometimes they go to city council. It's just so much overhead for benign changes. So I really hope we clean this up as we can.
I agree.
Okay, so my, my only thought, my only thought, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of this as well. We just went, we just did one a month or so ago, in another neighborhood, and the neighborhood was dominantly had had, had the had the non-setback on the second story, and it seemed perfectly natural to do this. I actually walked through the neighborhood a little bit. There's a, there's a, there's a, there's a house not quite directly across the street, that is two story house that has no setback. There's with funny color. And, and, and then I, I kind of walked down the street and it was, I think I saw a couple of other houses around there. But so it, it, it's, um, there are other examples of it, as much as there are other examples of it as much as the last one we looked at. But it, it seems since, since the neighbor is not objecting and it, it, it seems unreasonable. That it, it looks fine. But you know, we actually discussed this last, last time about whether we make the change and, and, you know, Commissioner Fields expresses wanting to simplify those too. And you know, my only, my only caveat on that is that it's in the code. That we, we have this as having second story setback. So that would need to change. Question would be whether we would need a universal change for the entire city or whether we would do it neighborhood by neighborhood. Depending on, on the, what the neighborhood is, you know, these particular neighborhoods, it fits in fine. But there may be neighborhoods where th- this hasn't been done and it's been more wedding cake kind of look, right? And so, so you know, I, I think there needs to be, if, if, if it's going to be looked at, then it needs to be looked at. If you change the code, what's the implications for the whole city? And, and, and whether or not it can be done in a way where there's rules for ministerial approval that would make, would take into account objectively, the different neighborhoods in terms of, of, of whether or not this is a common So I'm just saying, I, I think that the change would be something that needs to have some thought put into it before they had. But it certainly, you know, we're gonna have another one in another month. So just everybody remember that we've talked about it. But otherwise, I, I'm, I'm fine with this as well. And I think at this point we can have a motion, right?
I'll, I'm happy to move that the Planning Commission of the City of Campbell approve a site and architectural review permit to allow the construction of approximately five hundred thirty four square foot second story addition to an existing single family residence. With a reduction to the second story side yard setback from nine and a half feet to about five feet, three inches. On property located at seventeen ninety six Grace Avenue. PLN twenty twenty four dash twenty.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gray. We need a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fields. Take a vote. Commissioner Fields.
Aye.
Commissioner Strasky.
Aye.
Commissioner Gray.
Aye.
Commissioner Blutbinder.
Aye.
Lester Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Sisso. Aye. Got you now, sweetie? Okay. Sorry, I, I need to introduce them. The site of this PLM two oh two three dash twenty five fifty seven dash one Gilman Avenue and sixty Dillon Avenue. Public hearing to consider the request of Richard E. on behalf of Robson Road Homes LLC to allow the construction of a residential plan development, including twenty five townhomes with twelve junior accessory dwelling units and one ten year apartment building, the creation of twenty six private lots. And seven common lots, total thirty three new lots with the use of a thirty five percent density bonus. And waivers from zoning code and East Campbell Avenue master plan. Removal five trees on property located at fifty seven dash one one Gilman Avenue and sixty Dillon Avenue. The application under consideration include a planned development permit and density bonus request tentative subdivision map and tree removal permit. Submitted under an SP three thirty preliminary application. Filed in compliance with government code sixty five nine four one dash one. Mitigated negative declaration has been prepared for this project. Tendative city council date is May seventh. Project planner is Nishani Seoni.
Shanti.
Shanti. All yours.
Hey, everyone. My name is Nishanti Seoni. I'm the lead planner for this project. We also have Richard Walker on Zoom from Interwest Consulting to answer any questions. This is the Robson Elms project, which consists of a planned development permit, density bonus request, tentative subdivision map. Perfect permit. At property located at fifty seven to one oh one Gilman Avenue and sixty Dillon Avenue. The project site is a one point four five two gross acre, is a bridge of six parcels. Located southwest of the Dillon Avenue, East Campbell Avenue intersection. Entire site is zone planned development. The sixty Dillon property has a land use designation of central commercial and is located in the East Campbell Avenue master plan. The remainder of the site has a land use designation of commercial and medium density residential. It is located in the south of Campbell Avenue area plan. Site is developed with two vacant residential uses and a variety of commercial uses, all of which will be removed. Before we get into the details of the project, a hint to note is that the applicant filed a preliminary application in March of twenty twenty three. This locked in zoning district designations and general plan policies in effect at the time, which have since been replaced. And the south of Campbell area plan has since been rescinded, but does apply to this project. That preliminary application was reviewed on April eleventh of twenty twenty three. Second thing to note is that the Housing Accountability Act limits the city's ability to deny a housing development project since it's a violation of objective standards, or it would adversely impact health and safety. Secondly, the PD zoning doesn't actually have any development standards that apply to the project, so the objective standards that are fairly limited. And initial study and mitigated neck deck was prepared to evaluate potential issues required for air quality, cultural resources, geology and soils, hazardous materials and noise impacts. Those mitigation measures have been included and as conditions of improvement. Additionally, on November twenty first, twenty twenty three, the applicant received approval from the San Francisco Regional Water Quality Control District, Regional Water Quality Control Board for a current conditions report and action plan. This is for some issues found in soil and soil vapor. There are recommended actions for remediation and sampling of this soil. The applicant is required to go through this process as part of the action measures. The applicant is requesting a planned development permit with density bonus request to allow twenty five townhomes, twelve J to use and ten apartment units. A best tentative subdivision map and a tree removal permit. This is the site layout. See that the access to the site is provided by Gilman Avenue, two separate entrances and exits. There is no access provided from Dillon Avenue. From the staff report. Pedestrian access from Dillon Avenue. That pedestrian access is actually only a bench surface. So incidents, crews, things like that, use that, but generally pedestrian access will be off of Gilman Avenue. Each townhome will have two private parking stalls. There will be a total of sixty five stalls on the site. And because the site is located near high frequency transit and consistent with AB twenty eighty seven, there is actually no parking that's required for this project. Additionally, the fire district has approved this design for the curb access on that larger entrance left side of the site plane. Reason for this is that the fire district requires a minimum width entrance in order to meet the returning radius requirements. But the public works department expressed concern that having too wide of an entrance would result in speeding in and out of the site for residents and visitors. So they've proposed a half curve. Majority of the curve will be nine inches tall and the part of it will be four and a half inches tall. What that will do is deter people from speeding in and out of the site, but will allow fire trucks to have a wide entrance to current radius requirements. This is the elevation for the apartment building front in Dillon Avenue. Building is forty six feet and eleven foot inches tall, which is about the standard requires of vapor. The applicant is using a contemporary design with a variety of materials, elevations and a cohesive color palette. Primarily using stucco, composite shingles, painted siding and metal accents. The townhomes will have two separate designs that follow a similar design philosophy to the apartment building. One thing to note is that the applicant is still revising some of these designs. There will be some minor modifications like the through a staff of the Lastly, the density bonus for this project is a thirty five percent density bonus to allow an additional ten units. They qualify for this with the inclusion of affordable housing units, two very low income apartment units and one very low income and one moderate income town. Additionally, the applicant has applied for waivers from development standards that they are allowed to do under this density bonus application. The tree removal permit is required for the removal of five trees, four of which are protected, three of these are considered fair condition and maintenance and keeping of all three of these, we render the project infeasible. Project was reviewed for consistency with general plan, I just plan consistency. It was found to be consistent with the general plan, East Campbell Avenue master plan and South America. One last thing to discuss. In discussion with the applicant, they requested a few modifications to conditions, condition seventeen eighteen of exhibit A. Regarding the aerial access for fire trucks. We won't just add a sentence here to state that aerial access is only required for Dillon Avenue and up to Gilman Avenue or for the private drive. Going off of that exhibit B, condition nine point I states that tree putting be limited to limited to not prevent the streets from reaching their mature height. This standard does not apply to trees that need to be at a maximum height, sorry, maximum height in order to allow that aerial access. Last clarification there. And lastly, condition twelve point A is regarding ensuring that the occupants of AMR units, we think requirements is responsible for that. It currently states that that's the applicant's responsibility. We will change that to say that it is the city's responsibility. And applies to all below market. Thank you for bearing with me. I know that was a lot. Staff has been all necessary, found all necessary findings and met all necessary requirements. The end is recommended by the planning commission. Adopted a resolution recommending that the city council adopt a mitigated neck deck and prove all requests.
Thank you. Question?
I understand that the trees are gonna be removed because the project is peaceful. Are they replacing the trees somewhere else or is it these local trees or something?
There will be landscaping on it. Both the streets and back to the trees. Yep. It will be like for like placements.
Was this already, so this was already PD zoning, they're requesting another development permit to develop this particular project.
So zoning is the same.
And let me know if this is a question that are suited for the applicant, but we got the preliminary hearing two days short of a year ago. What is possible?
Oh, well, it's a long process of getting the actual final application. We had a revised project plans. Fire, public works department to choose. And address those issues. There was an environment problem. That took a significant time. Side marks of PD meeting that we had to go to. By commission and city council. So combination of the process.
Okay, and that's just my question. Thank you.
Commissioner Gray? Yeah, I do have a number of questions here. And I know this is a good project that we talked about about a year ago. Just on the sequel part of it, I know you said the sequel person was here, so I'll just ask this for any project, I suppose. But you know, we talk about these corrective actions that are going to be taken. So who, I assume that the San Francisco County Regional Water Quality Control Board and whoever would be the persons that would make sure that those corrective actions were taken.
Richard answered that. Richard, do you mind chiming in?
Yes, certainly. How do you do? Planning Commission, Richard Walker, principal planner with the Interwest Group. Pleased to meet you. Like to thank the commission and the staff for a very well written staff report. The correspondence with the regional water quality control board staff that is responsible for the remediation has ultimately stated that there are volcanic organic compounds ultimately missed that is evaporating from the soil beneath the property to be developed. The case has ultimately been closed. However, there is a pending mitigation measure as well as condition of approval that requires the applicant to file a request with the regional water quality control board for a certification that prior to construction, and we can confirm this with the mitigation monitoring and reporting program with respect to timing of mitigation. However, it is currently a mitigation measure and condition of approval that the applicant secure a confirmation from the regional water quality control board that the volcanic, sorry, organic compounds have been remediated prior to construction. As it is currently written in the hazards and hazardous materials chapter of the MND. There are clear instructions for the applicant how to secure this confirmation of remediation. And it is also a mitigation measure in the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. And as recommended by senior planner Daniel Fama, it's also going to be included as a condition of approval. At, at, at the end of the day, the fact of the matter is the property is safe for construction. However, this is a belt and suspenders effort to ensure that regional water quality control board concerns with respect to remediation have been completed far prior to grading permit and building permit issuance.
Okay, now, thank you. Thank you for that thorough answer there.
Let's get thorough, thorough question. So. As I'm not a secret lawyer. Are which volatile organic chemicals were involved? Are they actually dangerous? Like, what, what is the level of thing that is being mitigated here?
The point, the level at this stage is, is benign because the case has gone through a remediation effort. And the state water resources control board staff who is responsible for overseeing this case has acknowledged that the case has been closed, but as a final condition of case closure, the applicant is required to secure a, a final statement from the regional water quality control board and a final test. Ultimately, to answer your question, a vapor barrier is going to be what is required, which is already required as far as building code construction is concerned, but that vapor barrier ultimately is what is going to remediate any concerns with the volatile organic compound mist that remains as a potential concern for the regional water quality control board.
Right. I, I guess I'm, I'm not asking like, how is mitigation going to be done? I'm asking, what is the thing that's being mitigated?
It is vapor from the soil.
Right. What, what substance is evaporating soil? I assume it's not water vapor.
Actually, it is. Yes, it is. If you'd like, we could refer to. It's actually summarized in the staff report as well.
It says volatile organic compounds.
That's correct. But if we are interested, we could visit the hazardous materials section of the MND. Which has a clear description of remaining regional water quality control board concerns and the means by which it will be remediated. If Nishant, are you able to access that chapter and the section specific to remediation of VOC?
Yeah, I'll have to stop sharing.
Here it is. Here it is.
Page four hundred twenty-two of the report. Primarily carbon titric oxide and titric chloroethylene concentrations above the residential direct exposure ESLs.
So what having that or what metals are there?
Says uh primary concerns are soil lead, naphthalene, hexavalan, chromium, cobalt, diultrine, shallow soil concentration slightly above the current twenty nineteen. Regional water board environmental screening levels ESLs for residential direct exposure.
Right. However, if you refer to the hazards and hazardous materials section of the MND. The case GeoTracker ID. Was opened on January ninth, twenty twenty-three. Being managed by Ross Steenson, Senior Engineer Geologist at the Regional Water Quality Control Board. And on November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. The Water Control Board approved the current conditions report and corrective action plan. Appendix E. So there are two basic steps that are required to secure. The no further action determination from the Regional Water Quality Control Board. Those steps and the methods to secure. The no further action determination are the mitigation measures that are incorporated. In the MMRP for this section of the MND. Uh as in addition, we also have as appendix E. The analysis and conclusions of the November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Water Quality Control Board. Uh current conditions reported corrective actions plan. So if you're looking for the specific vapor compounds that we are ultimately looking to remediate to a hundred and ten percent. Those will be described in detail in appendix E of the MND.
Thank you.
I'll continue with the more questions then uh if we're okay on that item. Uh Daniel, let me ask you real quick. I I I'm going back to our, I know we had a long discussion about a year ago. What what was the HCD issue that we were trying to come to grips with a year ago and?
Yeah, the the HCD issue was whether or not a SP three thirty pre-app could be exercised in a manner that. Resulted in fewer housing units being constructed than the city wanted. Typically, at the time.
And the answer was it could.
That yes, the answer was that the the law blocks and standards and affect the time irrespective of.
And I know it's moot, but what that site right now, what do what is it sold for? How many?
It's sold for a greater number of units, but the delta is not as large since the study session with the inclusion of the apartment building and the JAD.
Oh, sure. No, I know. I know that. Of course, the other thing, when you talk about the number of units, those number of units could also have JD ADUs as well. So that number might be. Corresponding the higher, I suppose.
Be both not not necessarily in as much of that, under the new densities, you would actually see something that would be more of an apartment building or condo. Now you wouldn't have.
I know, I know it's moot. But so in terms of our issue, so so what we're looking at and I and the shot you had in your report. Uh you know, objective standards and safety issues. And you said uh objective standards are limited. So my question is, is we don't have any objective standards that apply. They're not just limited. They are non-existent. Is that true or not true?
There are a handful from the East Campbell Avenue Master Plan. Master Plan, uh few in the report. Page two and three, so there's. Setback standards, height standards, some of which they are uh deviating from density standards. But.
All right, now you're right. I got you. I remember. I just said she looked at that. And then in terms of the the safety issue or however we phrased it, and I that came up. And the only one that we really had a year ago that I can remember was when they were going to back out on the Dillon on the driveway. Now we don't have that issue anymore. That that's correct, right? So that's gone. That's gone away. Okay. Uh and that in terms of the JADUs, I know. So they're separate legal units, but they can't be sold individually. But what does separate legal units mean?
You could you could rent it separate from renting.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's with them. Okay. And then in terms of the uh, so we've got uh. Three VLI units and one of moderate income units part of this project, but two are two are rentals and two are for sale. Okay. And in terms of the the rental ones, I know that we said in there that that's required to keep that. Perpetuity for a lot of many, many years. But in terms of the for sale units, how does that work? When when they're sold? Somebody buys them at at a at a very low income uh household buys the unit and they want to sell. Do they have to? Continue to sell it to a very BLI? I think they, I think the developer.
Density bonus units probably go over Steve in question. Have a component of equity share. Not entirely sure of the mechanics, but the units either sold to another eligible household or if not, the city gets a portion of the. The equity that that homeowner would otherwise receive. So we would just look at the funds for our.
Some safeguards. Okay, all right. And uh. Oh, yeah, well, Dillon driveways, you don't have to worry about. Oh, uh. And we did talk about the five trees are going to be removed, thirteen on the site, so there's eight trees staying on the site.
No, there's thirteen trees um.
Being removed.
Contries being removed on site. Thirteen trees being.
And eight trees are staying now, I guess. I don't know. Are there are there thirteen trees on the site altogether or five being removed or no?
Sorry, um five trees, yeah, five trees are being removed. Some are are remaining and a few additional.
These are kind of picky, picky. And then the two more picky items here, but in. On Gilman on the driveways, it looks like, I thought in the report we said two entrances and one exit. And then I, when I looked on the drawings, it looked like there were. Two exits and one entrance. So I'm just trying to clarify. I driveway situation.
So the smaller. So this right here will be an entrance, but there's no exit from here. And this right here will be both.
Okay, so just the one exit. And uh I got a couple of questions for developer uh picky questions, but just one final one for you, very minor, but I we talked about the number of parking and uh. Switched to two units per town home, fifty plus six, fifty-six plus eight. So I got, I counted sixty-four and you said it's sixty-five in your report. So I don't, I don't care what the number is, especially sixty-four, sixty-five, but just uh. Just FYI on that. Double check that. No biggie, just wanted to point that out. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um so some quick questions. The one that is uh. Moderate, does it count as affordable? Anything above moderate doesn't count. That that's 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 margin to it, right?
At least I think gradations are moderate.
And then um I needed a little bit more clarification, maybe just restating of. Said the fire truck, the um, I don't know, maybe public works is the best. But you said the driveways were not made as wide to discourage speeding in and out.
Right. So this driveway right here, in order to meet the fire district's turning radius requirements would need to be widened. The concern there was having too wide of a driveway would encourage um regular vehicles to speed. Just easier to to navigate. So um rather than completely widening the driveway. Portion of it would be half, four and a half, which is true. That's tall enough to deter a regular sized car from speeding, but it's low enough that a fire truck, if needed, can drive over. Effectively, they have a.
But now what about the the other entrance at the very right side of the project closer to have that? That if, is that a fire truck exit or fire truck entrance? I believe that would just be an exit. Or they would back out.
Yeah, the the interior has been designed as a turnaround. So they'll go ahead and pull out around.
So they don't need.
They they don't need.
They don't need to use that.
Yeah, they won't use it.
Okay. And then, thank you. And then the final question, you mentioned due to high frequency. Transit that parking complex is really zero. I understand that, but by that you mean the. And the light rail. You don't mean high frequency buses?
Uh but it's yeah, it's close to a light rail um station. So we have maps that kind of layout the areas where it's.
Right, right. But I mean, when when it's at high frequency, uh you weren't referring to buses, you were referring to the light rail station.
Yeah, I mean, there are parts of the city that do have high frequency bus service that does qualify for eight and twenty ninety-seventh.
Right, but.
But not here. Here it's just a light rail.
Thank you. That's it.
To be clear, I think the twenty-six buses every fifteen minutes.
So I had a question um about the rental units. So who who actually will own those units? What are the requirements around that?
Well, the developer will own the the apartment building or sell it to somebody else who would rent it as a as a business. And then in terms of the PMR rental units, the city's housing have affordable housing. Administrator, house keys, does the administration of its units basically identifies eligible households that are that are eligible to.
The city does that.
The city's contractor.
Okay, so it's totally separate from the property owners.
Sorry.
It's totally separate.
Correct. And there's a it's a complicated process, but it's something the city guides. The property owner would still enter the lease agreement if the tenant gives. They get to reduce rents.
And it's also a time uh in the right, like fifty-five years, thirty years where. If it's sold, it's going to be sold at lower price, but after the time expires, then it can be sold at market rate.
You're talking about the for sale units then? Uh they are restricted for uh, well. Trying to trying to remember the um uh. That it that is uh actually taken care of by an equity sharing arrangement. Rather than by a restriction on the time period. There there are some units that may be restricted time-wise based on. Our own inclusionary ordinance. But I, if I'm recalling correctly, uh the uh the. The density bonus law does not place a time restriction on for sale. When we spoke about this a year ago, one of the things we talked about was a ten-foot setback on the right side. Like on this map right now, we we needed a ten-foot setback because of like the East Campbell. Zoning plan or something like did that get resolved?
It did. So um it actually turned out that our um GIS data was not totally accurate. Or determination of which parcels fell into the East Campbell Avenue Master Plan versus the South. Uh area plan were incorrect. So what it actually is the case is that. All the townhome uh parcels south of the site. Yeah, so you can kind of see the uh parcels front in Gilman, those are all on the South of Campbell area plan. It's just the sixty gallon. Parcel with the apartment units. That's in the scheme.
Okay.
So that's setbacks. It doesn't actually apply.
Um in the parking spaces for the people that live in the apartment complex. Do they are the ones shown there meant for them or had like what was, what is that meant to be?
Those are meant for the apartments.
And how many are there?
There are eight units.
Okay. Uh and Commissioner, other Commissioners have asked a lot of my other questions, primarily about like the safety of vapor and other things. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um yeah, most of my questions have been asked. Uh just just one clarification on the. On the uh. Soil issue. So to be clear, um. The developer will excavate 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 the soil. And then an inspector will come out from the Water Quality Board to do an onsite. Test to confirm it's in compliance.
We will work with a third-party um consultant that that maybe they've already worked with before. They'll do the testing and provide that information to.
Okay. But it will be tested and confirmed. Okay. And then the only other, this is stupid, but I've never heard this term before, aerial access. That is that for fire?
Yeah, for ladder.
Oh, for ladder, oh, area, but ladder, no, speaking helicopter. So. So.
Yeah, the fire department has had two main sizes of trucks. So the area one is the bigger one that requires a lot more space and it's kind of what drives a lot of the interior site layout projects. And also limits the height of buildings. It's.
Good. I like to learn something that we that we that we need. So um. You know, the other questions were answered and and this is like the, at least the third, maybe fourth time. Uh we we it's it's come to us. I was one of the sorry for this too. So um. Uh you know, when it first came, it it was uh. There were a number of things. I think that is is part of, you know, why it's taken a while is that there had to be, this thing had to be revisited significantly. Uh uh I think that makes sense in terms of the timing. Um I don't have any other questions. I don't have any questions. So we'll. We'll open it up for um. The applicant, the representative, who are free to come and speak to us if you'll come up there and turn on the mic. That's the ground thing.
Thank you, Shant. Yeah, good evening, Commissioners. My name is Richard Yee. I'm a project manager for. Meet me tonight. Uh you reviewed our residential project at study session. At that time, we proposed twenty-nine units and discussed an option to increase the unit count to forty-seven. Your general consensus that that was to replace the option and you had some courage to stand to help us. So I'm happy to report to you that our updated design provides forty-seven residential units. We achieved a sixty-two percent increase through density bonus in addition of JADUs and and apartment building. As stated in staff's presentation, we are requesting several waivers with no concessions. First slide uh shows our uh. Five five-unit townhomes along Gilman Avenue. And these are pictures of similar robes and projects in the city in Campbell. The new townhomes and apartment building will have the same architectural design quality, craftsmanship and detail. Quick aerial view of our six parcel assemblage for our project site. And we also have existing photos, photos of the existing neighborhood. So as you see, we we did replace the four townhomes on Dillon Avenue with a ten-unit apartment building. Um the main driveway is off of Gilman Avenue. And so that wider driveway that you see is where a fire truck would enter. And and that intersection there is essentially a hammerhead, which allows the fire truck to also then turn around and come back out. The driveway to the immediate, to all the way to the right, that is for uh exit on. The uh, and and so that main driveway also that provides uh access to the assigned parking for the apartment building. The um, there is obviously pedestrian access on Dillon and Gilman, the front doors for both the apartment building and townhomes face the public street. And this visual and physical connection is pedestrian friendly and ties our new community to their neighbors. Although parking is now required because project signs within have by a major transit stop, we have two covered parking spaces per townhome unit, six gas parking stalls and eight assigned apartment building parking spaces for a total of sixty four onsite parking spaces. If this doesn't include the five additional street parking spaces on Gilman and Dillon created by the elimination of existing curb cuts. We're we're providing diverse and affordable housing options. We have two, three and four bedroom townhomes. We are offering studio one and two bedroom apartment units and junior accessory dwelling units. The J A D U's can provide source of income as the only rentable units to subsidize homeowners mortgage payments. Here's a closer view of our five unit townhomes along Gilman. These are our interior duet townhomes. Once again, our apartment building as few uh long on Dillon. So a- as uh the shot noted, we are continuing to refine exterior building elevations. And similar to our process for our Madison Townhomes down the street next to the city courtyard, we are proposing to work with staff guarding our building exterior design findings. Um, I I did want to just speak briefly about the departmental aspects of our, we we have actually mitigated for the Baker Gas soil. Uh, really what's left to to clean up on that site is led from older structures and and we really can't do that until we take down existing buildings there. For effective action plan, those outline the actions that we take to do that. Testing is done by our consultant. Those tests are submitted to the water board. And uh, it's hasn't been there to their satisfaction. Uh, and and if they're satisfied, obviously they issue for the action later to us. Uh, so in closing, our our project will, oh, we uh, so and and also I just want to make correct that there is the requirement for us to install a vapor barrier. Is there a vapor barrier has passed mitigated by the. There is no, no, no requirement to. It's not required. So our project will complement the character of the existing neighborhood. Uh, the articulated building forms and used high quality materials looking feel like our vast and townhomes, which are character defining for the emerging residential neighborhood. So appreciate your consideration of our project tonight and we respectfully ask for your approval. Certainly look forward to starting constructions. Thank you.
Thank you. She's got any questions? Just for our indication, um, what what from your perspective most of the time between the initial presentation a year ago and today, how much of a, at least how much of a hassle the same part of the application and all that?
Right. I mean, it it does take the steps that articulated. I mean, I mean, we obviously we had to update our site plan to swap out the townhomes. We did go through our own design process of the design. And there was sarc and preparation of exhibits. I mean, all that takes time.
I guess I'm asking, is there anything the city did that made it take longer than it would have otherwise?
No, I mean, staff is great to work with. I I. Sure, I'm answering your question.
No, no, I I if there there's not a there there, then that answers my question. Thank you very much.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Yee, I just saw that he mentioned so uh uh, you know, again, for our identification, because all all these projects will be coming. So you could have gone without any parking at all. Did you, did you ever consider that as anything viable, as a viable option for a project to go without any parking? From minimal parking?
I don't know how you would create a project like this without providing any parking. I think that it would have impact to to your to your neighbors.
Yeah. I just wondered just if you even thought about if it even came up as a as an option, just something that you just completely.
I think we understood.
Not feasible, you're just not gonna do.
We understood we had that that option, but I but we did think that 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 was really creating the type of neighborhood that that needs to be.
If you had gone without parking, would there be more units you could have put on the site? Maybe you didn't look at it that way, but I.
I don't.
I'm just looking at I'm looking at future projects, kind of thinking.
No, not based on the product that we're building.
Well, I just don't have to ask. Uh, and so there's thirty three lots, twenty six private and seven common. So what are the, how do the, how does that break out? What are the seven common lots? Is that?
The the common area lots would be like the landscape, the landscape, the private street.
Okay. But the twenty six private lots are the are the twenty five townhomes and the apartment?
The apartment.
Okay. Uh, and you needed the extra two foot uh of height just on the apartment building, not on the townhomes. Is that?
Well, uh, yeah, apparently we we've we've uh got above the forty five.
Yeah, well, but and I was always gonna ask you why you needed those extra two feet, but yeah, it sounds like you're not exactly sure.
I mean, it it I would say that it probably that that though we had as as at its height probably serves a good transition between the crescent condos and the links to the to the side of us.
Well, just yeah, I just didn't know why you needed the the two feet over the over the uh, the backs, but it's just on the apartment building. So I I guess it mitigates it from either side. I don't know what Cressley and the other project just uh south of you or, you know, shorter. And just my final question. Oh, the parking stalls are under under standard size, I think. I saw that. Is that gonna be an issue for our uh? What's the upshot of that? Is that a problem for tenants or?
We were just trying to create, we're just a little short on the line. We're trying to just create a little more landscape things than the.
Sixteen feet instead of twenty.
Well, it's sixteen plus a two foot overhead. So effectively we have eighteen instead of twenty.
Okay, yeah.
And eighteen eighteen is a.
It's pretty, pretty spunky. All right. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have several questions. One, uh, following up what what my colleague, Commissioner Buckbender, was asking. You know, we know our staff are great, you know. My question is, are there any processes that you thought were redundant or any process that could have been um optimized or you know, made more efficient that you could, yes, tell us about it or is that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, maybe more to try and tailor, but you know, well. Because you guys are the experts, you know, so we.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Commission, C staff, the record. My name is Mark Robson. No, I don't. There's nothing in the process that you guys are doing that are creating delays. It's we we spend a lot of time ourselves thinking about how we can make the process go faster, but right now it's and we're not done designing. I don't know if you picked that up from Richard, but we're still designing these buildings. We continue to design to get them where we want them, and it takes time. And with our own design team, they're busy. I mean, people are engineers, are architects, have other projects and they're busy. It's just and we ask ourselves the same question, why can't we get this done faster? So it's, but we have three different building types, you know, in a relatively small site and it's not just one. There's three different buildings. So that adds to the work, but it also helped us get the density and the unit mix that we were trying to get.
Thank you for that. Um, so uh, continuing with my questions, I saw the four story building that you have in Gilman. Do you have, I believe you will have elevators in there, right? It's a three half story. No, don't have that. That's a surprise. So and that uh uh, and then the second, and then the last question is, the the twelve J A D U's belong to some of the twenty five townhomes.
Correct. They are, they are part of the uh, five five unit townhomes that have been having.
Okay. So so they're not independent units of their own. They are part of the um, they're attached to the structure. Thank you.
Uh, my questions were answered. I've guys always do. Based on my seven years.
Uh, my questions were on process efficiency and recovery. Thank you.
Yeah, I I don't, I just about the elevator. We we that question was asked uh last time. And I think the answer to that, there's going to be quite a lot for there's a cutoff, right? At at three, that there's some kind of regulation does not require an elevator for for this side, for this uh kind of complex, right?
Yeah, I don't recall the details, but that's this was your D buyer built in.
Yeah. Okay, I I don't I don't have anymore. I don't. Got to ask, Mr. Yee, and I I I know you guys have done a lot of really good projects. I have my fellow commissioners here, but uh is there any E V parking or solar uh energy components in the project?
We see, I I believe there's solar requirement for the townhomes.
There is.
And I believe we do have E V, one E V for the.
I got an E V spot. Thank you. You have any questions? With mission? Thank you, Mr. Yee.
Thank you.
Uh, there, is there anybody else who uh wanted to speak on this? Uh, anybody else? You are online? Okay, I'll close that and we'll move to discussion about the Commissioners. Your fields.
Uh, supported with this project, great to see the changes over the last year as we saw iterations in the project design. Um, these seem like really nice apartments, great to see them next to Campbell Park. Uh, hope to see all of Campbell Park filled out too, so we don't have empty spaces and such a sort of gateway pinnacle part of our town. Uh, but these look great. Hope they can get built quickly.
Yeah, like like I said, you guys always do a really nice job, very thoughtful, and even from the comments that were made tonight, it's clear that a lot of time um goes into making sure that these are high quality and provide all of the detail and requirements that people need to really feel at home in the places that they live. So thanks for putting together such a great project this time and, you know, throughout the last seven years that I've seen.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So uh, I also think it's a great project, you know, excellent presentations. The the two um items that I like to um uh recommend is um, what is it? E V space, is this E V charging or E V parking open?
Charging.
Charging, perfect. Okay, so that's great. And so my only other recommendation is please consider adding a, I know it may not be a requirement, but adding a um elevator. Uh, it increases your margins. Uh, you know, how people will be able to use this, uh, use the higher floors of this project. Otherwise, great project.
Great. Yeah, also in support, yeah, I think it's a good project from the developer that's done a lot of good projects here in Campbell and uh it is, you know, it's just a drop in the bucket, but it's nice to see uh at least three B L I units coming to fruition and and and, you know, the J A D U's will be affordable, you know, just by their nature, I guess. So um, it's a good project for Campbell. Thanks.
I'm happy to see this come before us. Um, bye. My concern is that, you know, you have yet to see a proper one of these projects that doesn't involve design standards or waivers and so forth that we found or and I think yes, that they actually make this possible to build. Uh, I think that uh ten year apartment building looks amazing. Uh, really excited to see this uh going up hopefully. Uh, I'm just really excited to see this coming back for planning commissions. It's an excellent project. I'm really excited that, yeah, you mentioned it's four units. It's gonna get a really nice set of residential units like right by downtown. It's excellent project. I'm very happy to see it. Um. Got to ask when, um, if I can ask, when will this be? When do you expect to start construction? Thank you. Uh, very excited to see this project. That's what I got.
Okay, um, yeah, I I think it's a great project. Um uh, I I go down, I walk down the park quite often and I I notice the uh the light industrial area and always wishing it to kind of go away. And so I'm also hoping that the crescent, like, something starts going up. Um, so I I'm excited about this. It fills in a nice piece of uh of uh of Gilman Avenue and and the apartments are, you know, I I, you know, the whole elevator thing, it's it's late to get. And so I'd ask that question at the study session. Uh, there's that requirement. I'm sensitive to A D A stuff and and the disabled requirement, disabled requirements in terms of, and I'm an old guy, so it's like I walk upstairs. So uh, but, you know, if that's the way it is, that's the way it is. So uh um, uh, I think it's a great project. Looking forward to uh uh seeing it come to fruition and I wish you guys uh much luck. So can we um have a motion? Somebody other than Commissioner Craig, guys, you like? I want to do it. I know.
I don't really want to do it. I know.
I I moved that the uh, thank you, Commissioner, Dr. Resolution, recommend the City Council adopt a mitigated negative declaration to approve plan development permit density bonus request tentative subdivision have entry removal permit.
Uh, I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Camp Car, uh, motion, motion by Commissioner Buckbender. We have a vote. Your fields.
Aye.
Commissioner Sreski.
Aye.
Commissioner Gray.
Aye.
Commissioner Buckbender.
Aye.
Pastor Camp Car.
Aye.
Chair associate.
Aye.
Motion passes. You're unanimous, Lee. Good luck. Thank you. Next item is land use upcoming progress report. Commissioner Camp Car, I assume you're making the lead on this?
Yes, um, so much. Smart, but let's see. I'm gonna start sharing.
Actually, can I can I ask for like a three minute break? That's for Greg? All right. Get back to the chair. It's not a break.
Thank you very much. So this is progress support of the land use subcommittee. Commissioner Vostresk and myself on this committee and. The. You know, we've been, we have met a couple of times regarding the. Regarding the direction that we're taking this and the issue is. Some of the densities that have come as a result of our last update. The gaps that are in the densities and. Some of the ways that, for example, gross acre versus net acre and how they affect. Different properties, you know, that's what our subcommittee is trying to explore to see what's the level that we're talking about. I was reading San Jose Spotlight, you know, it's like a publication. Publication that they have some charge regarding Campbell, which they say they got from H C D. This is the first one they said. They said we produce two hundred thirty homes. Twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen went down to forty five, twenty twenty went down to twenty five. Twenty twenty one went down to three, now this is COVID two later. You know, so it's understandable. Then twenty twenty two, thirty three. And based on our latest. Read on numbers, we need to be doing three hundred and seventy two. To meet our stated read on of this. This is annually. You know, for the next seven or eight years to be able to make what we said we will make. Now, I. I don't blame the staff for this. I blame us. We are the body of the council is the body that. Has to make this happen, you know, and so. You know, I'm I'm I want to be clear as to at least what my opinion is on this. Now, this was all homes. This is the affordable homes that they reported. We had twenty eighteen, we had eighteen. Five in twenty nineteen, zero twenty twenty, zero twenty twenty one, and one in twenty twenty. And the average is to be at two hundred and eleven. You know, so it's it's kind of mind boggling, you know. What we need to do to be able to get closer.
Can I make a clarification? Because I went to St. Louis, I actually. They use the term affordable homes. In reality, we're talking about affordable housing. And so it's not implication, it's affordable homes, it's then it's a home. But the the reason is it's affordable housing, that gives apartments, okay? So they.
You mean the house as opposed to this apartment could be a home?
Well, I understand that, but the term that H C D uses, the terms that we should be using, it's housing. So. People see, the average person says affordable homes. They're not thinking about apartments that's for that. That's a that's affordable. So I just just for clarification. Yeah, I'm talking about.
Okay, you know, thanks for clarification, man. I think that's fine. I think, you know, I agree with that. So the next, the next three slides, they compare the different cities in. In Santa Clara County. Twenty eighteen, twenty twenty, then twenty twenty two, twenty eighteen. Campbell, you know, was at zero. Now, this doesn't mean the building means zero per one thousand. You know, it could, the numbers could have been less than half, and that's why it rounds down to zero. But but still, you know. It tells us that we gotta. We gotta try harder. For twenty twenty, we're still at zero. And for twenty twenty two, we're still at zero, you know. And again, I see this as we have to step up. You know, as as the body that makes recommendations, the council and. Work with staff, you know, we have to step up, you know. This is staff that doesn't have ability to to make this move. It's us. Now, the next slide I want to share with you is. I we did a comparison between previous, you know, densities versus. Now densities in effect. As you can see previously. As as you can see. As you can see, previously, we had two. Two gaps between the. Light to medium density residential. And medium density residential. There was one gap and another gap between the medium density residential. And medium to high density residential. And each of those gap was a gap of one unit. From twenty to twenty one and from thirteen to fourteen. In the new. And that passed. There are four gaps. One of them a double, one of them a, you know, now, when I was down at. Long Beach, going through Commissioner training, I was talking to other, you know, city. Attorneys to city planners and, you know, to other planning commissioners and staff and. One of the things that, you know, they were sort of surprised when they go. How could you have gaps, you know, why would you need gaps in your density? You know, they were, you know, they couldn't explain. Explain to me as to if if not. Not a single one had gap that I had talked about. They couldn't understand why I have gaps. Actually, good. So. So the comparison that we're making here is, yes, we did bring the. We did increase the density. In different ranges. This is single family homes. And in general, densities went up. Twenty nine percent, twenty two percent, and twenty five percent. In the three different levels of single family densities that we have. Same thing with low to medium density residential. The. Range of densities went up twenty three percent. Again, twenty three percent. Twenty five percent for the medium density, twenty two percent for. The medium to high density and there was no high density before, not even high density. However, as you can see, I have a one here and a two here for footnotes and a three. And if you look at it. This is based on traditional gross acreage. That's that's when you. Calculate the area of that lot all the way to the center of the street. The new way of calculating, we don't do that. We go to the edge of the street. And that extra thirty foot, that's usually the half. Half width of a street, you know, pretty standard in. In Campbell. Actually makes a big difference for smaller lots. You could actually, if you have a hundred by one hundred foot lots. And you take away the thirty foot street on either side, like a corner lot. The area is reduced more than half. So from one hundred to one hundred, which gives you ten thousand, go to seventy by seventy, that's forty nine hundred. It's not even five thousand. Five thousand would be half, forty nine hundred with less than half. And there's additional cuts because you round the curves, you know, so. Thank God, staff acknowledges the. Properties that are on the corner that go through this. You know, but one of the efforts of this committee is to show that it's not just the corner. Lots that go through this. It's also the interior lots, lots next to the corner lots that could also look, you know, and. So so this is basically what this plan is saying. Now, there is some good news. The good news, which, you know, at the meeting with the director and he, you know, told me about S B six eighty four that may be coming. Actually, it is passed already, but it hasn't. It the effectiveness hasn't started July first is when it takes effect. S B six eighty four, in layman's terms, does for multi-family housing what S B nine. Did for or S B ten, I should say, paid for single family housing to a point where. It allows up to ten units. On any multi-family homes. As long as the minimum size units are. Created. So if this if this does take effect. In Campbell and it's not watered down, it will take care of all the. Concerns that, you know, this. Properties would have suffered. They they have a, they could use this. The state law to oppose their. So for this group. There might be a salvation. This group, however. You know, I don't know of any yet, you know, and and hopefully. With enough, you know, data, we could show that, you know, maybe, maybe there should be something, you know, and staff should rethink the. Density is, you know, at least for the. Single family. The next slide I want.
Maybe just to. Put this a little bit in context for people in terms of their. Square foot lot, zoning.
Yes.
And then the the slightly lower are the, I believe, twelve thousand. Fifteen thousand. But I think the key thing is that a lot of people in the residential. Zoning group. Will be affected depending on. The relative dimensions.
Well, one other thing that we're doing that's actually, you know, it's like putting salt on the wound, if you will, is. When we come up with a. When you do the calculation, come up with a number of the units allowed. Instead of rounding to the up or down or whatever, we always round down. This rounding down is actually takes away. So for example, if you do the calculation and come up with. Three point nine units that's allowed on this land. Instead of saying, well, we will make that four, you know, we rounded up to four. You know, the way we do it right now at Campbell, this is what Daniel tells me. We take away the point nine, it becomes three units. It's like, you know, well, some of these units have already lost because the gross acre. The traditional gross acre. Construction was changed. Why not change the rounding down so that at least they don't lose as much? The next item, the next thing that I want to show you is that. So the question is, do any. Actual parcels exist that go through this? Because I know last time when we had given. Scenario as to different categories where this could occur. Of course, I haven't had the chance to go through all the parcels in the city because. We I think we're talking tens of thousands of parcels. But if the some of the ones that I have gone through, I have found actual parcels that, you know. Actually goes with this and I'm trying to see if. Does this change it? Okay, so you could see, I haven't. I haven't. I'm not disclosing actual. Appear, even though I have it, I just want to give you an idea, like in this. Area, which is, I believe this color is like light. Light to medium, no, this is light to medium density and this is hacienda. Like in hacienda. You know, there was quite a few. On this area, there was, there was. There was at least two that I found. Not that I checked everything, but but a few of the ones I found, I found two that were affected. Up here. Got affected. This is Kennedy. Kennedy, actually, you know, I found a property that lost three. Beforehand, it had eleven. After, it would only get eight. So it lost three units a lot. And this is in a, we're in a, in a. Top of environment where. We have a housing crisis. We want to increase, you know, not chop away from. Their allotments, you know, so. Again, there is more, but this is the, this is just a progress that I wanted to. So now I understand that staff is going to make a presentation on six eighty four. If I'm not mistaken, Director, next next time, because it's still not scheduled.
Six eighty four does go into effect in July. At your next planning commission meeting, we're providing you a legislative update on that and the related laws. And you'll be getting that next month.
Thank you, sir. So hopefully we will learn more about that because. Because that could actually make, you know, most of what this committee is doing. If that, you know, does take into effect.
Potentially.
Potential, you know, there's still there's still single family. Issues that, you know, can be concerned, but that would be a much. Lesser burden to check that versus check every, you know, parcel. And it's not a simple can, simple can, you really have to, we can't quite do things to be able to.
Ask a question. If I think.
I just wanted to offer perspective. So are we actually developing? These single family parcels to have more than one unit on them? I think we have a few in O S P nine applications, mostly getting A D Us, which is how we densify these neighborhoods. The vast majority of land is some flavor of L D R. Which S B six eighty four does not apply. It was originally meant to, but there was some last minute shenaniganery and it doesn't. However, the city does control its own land use. We could decide otherwise. We could say, okay, the things you can do with S B six eighty four.
But if the some of the ones that I have gone through, I have found actual parcels that, you know. Actually goes through this and I'm trying to see if. Does this change it? Okay, so you could see, I haven't um. I haven't. I'm not disclosing actual. April, even though I have it. I just wanted to give you an idea, like in this. Area, which is uh I believe this color is like light. Light to medium, no, this is light to medium density and this is hacienda. Like in hacienda. You know, there was quite a few. Um on this area, there was, there was. There was at least two that I found. Not that I checked everything, but but the few of the ones I found, I found two that were affected. Up here. Got affected, this is Kennedy. Kennedy, actually, you know, I found a property that lost three. Beforehand, it had eleven, after it would only get eight. So it lost three unit allotments and this is in a, we're in a, in a. Top of environment where. We have a housing crisis, we want to increase, you know, not chop away from. Their um allotments, you know, um so um. Again, there is more, but this is the, this is just the progress that I wanted to. So now, um I understand that staff is going to make a presentation on six eighty four. If I'm not mistaken, director, next next time, because August still not scheduled.
Uh six eighty four does go into effect in July. At your next planning session meeting, we'll provide you a legislative update on that and the related laws. And you'll be getting that next month.
Thank you, sir. So um so hopefully people learn more about that, because. Because that could actually make, you know, most of what this committee is doing. If that, you know, does take into effect.
Potentially.
Potential, you know, there's still, there's still single family. Issues that, you know, can be concerned, but that would be a much lesser burden to. Check that versus check every, you know, parcel. Um and it's not a simple can, simple can, you really have to, we can't quite do things to be able to. Ask a question. If I think.
I just wanted to offer my perspective, so are we actually developing? These single family parcels to have more than one unit on them? I think we have a few, you know, S B nine applications, mostly getting used, which is how we densify these neighborhoods. Um the vast majority of land is some flavor of L D R. Which S B six eighty four does not apply, it was originally meant to, but there was some last minute shenanigan, read it doesn't. However, the city does control its own land use, we could decide otherwise, we could say, okay, the things you can do with S B six eighty four. Higher density land, you can do single family zones or L D R zones. We could recommend that and set it up the pike to the city council if we want to do that. Uh could you repeat that? So S B six eighty four is a state law, which says that we have to allow certain kinds of densification in.
Multi-family.
In multi-family zones.
No, not single family.
Right. We could, as a city. Change the zoning code so that you could do that in single family zones as well. That was what the law originally was going to do, it changed at the last moment. We can still change our zoning code to allow that. If we want to allow more density in single family zones, that's one way of doing that.
And then 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 pragmatically, what would that mean in terms of, give me an example, does that mean a single family lot? Could then put uh uh an apex on it, is that, I I don't understand.
I think, I do not know exactly how S B six eighty four looks, I think it's a bunch of tiny homes, you get like a cottage court.
Yeah, yeah.
You get like a cottage court as opposed to like it, so the Robson project, the ten unit building. I don't think you could do something like that, I think if you have, the idea is that you have like a large lot. Something like a lot of little lots and like little cottages on it.
So uh so I read six eighty four and it's a little bit more flexible. So if you, so I think you could be able to have. Like a condominium units. Where it has ten, you know, the, some of the limitations are no more than ten. Now, that doesn't mean you have to build ten, build four, build three, you know, but no more than ten. Um and um I think there are some other, you know, some other uh. Uh I guess limitations, but not to a point where with this courage. Like, you know, someone to build it, but but just like Commissioner, but like you said, city council doesn't have to say. Single family can build ten, they can say, and up to three, and up to four, so. So city council can decide if something similar of the six eighty four favor. With this for our, for our single family, and if you look at the map, all the yellow are single family. All the yellows on the map are single family, so it's not small, so we don't, it's not like single family is a small portion of our city. Um and if I'm not mistaken, I think.
The white orange that you've set, the couple places you've picked, tho- those are also single.
Those are also single family.
They're just a little bit bigger lot, right? Instead of it being a uh.
Yellow has slight arc.
Orange is a little bit.
No, no, yellow, yellow is like six thousand and orange is twelve thousand square.
I see, okay. Thank you for for approaching. Yellow is about six thousand, orange is about eight thousand, the so-called green, like green is ten thousand. So, yes, um.
So can I ask you a question about this thing where you said there's a lot, a lot over there on the west side, the south west side, where where uh. Uh 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 right now, based on what we have in place, they don't, they don't put aid on it. But in 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 theory, if you went out to the street and, you know, there was eleven, okay? So but but that's a, you, is that, is that a single family parcel? It's not a single family.
It is not a single. This this particular example that we're talking about, eight to eleven, that is not a single family parcel.
Or it's just a big, big parcel?
It is, I mean, it is not a huge parcel.
Because there's not very many empty parcels in Campbell.
Well, many times you take something that's not used anymore, has something on it. You can buy it, you you demo it and you build random, so it doesn't have to be an empty person. This could happen too. Also that has a structure on it, but it's not being used. Um and so um and so what I'm thinking is that. Our general plan, when we updated it. Even though we increased density. But because, you know, we changed from gross to net acre. Uh the, and this being a quarter, probably like a, you know, calling properties or getting them away, getting it washed. So it lost its eleven allotments, you know, if you do maximum of eight now. If somebody were to buy this lot and want to pay property, probably go and say, fine, you know, that's your trucks, but. It's the allotment that keeps the wonder of the man.
Yeah, I understand. I was under the impression now that. The subcommittee was intended to show that there's, uh to to look at the density and the. The change in the uh. The change in the the net decrease, the the decrease. Um would would have more than a small, that would have a significant difference in terms of. How many, how much more units we could put in Campbell and and and. You know, so I, I guess you haven't gotten to that yet, because most of, uh, if if I don't disrespect Commissioner Kamkar, much of what you've told us, we. You you had actually already talked about, talked about the gaps, you talked about the uh the smaller lot sizes. Uh the curved some 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 script, you know, you already heard about that. That I I was under the impression you were going to be investigating and creating data that would show. That there was be a significant, you know, the the eight versus eleven is self speculative. That person might just build a big house. Have one, okay, so we don't really know. And and we don't know how many there's potential for. Uh and and whether that number is even has any significance, because. You know, uh if we're talking about gaining a couple, a few dozen more. Then it's it's not worth the, I, from my personal opinion, it's not worth thinking about going back and modifying the general plan. The housing element, if if are we going to potentially have, depending on what people decide to do. Uh that maybe we gain a few dozen more uh in the next eight years, so to me, was it, to me, it was like. Is there enough evidence to suggest that that number could be significant?
So uh I would probably say I have looked at ten percent of the city. And I've found twenty or. Twenty uh unit lots, meaning that if the, if the homeowner. Developer wants to maximize the number of units you're building along, just like our previous project. Did, and most developers want to do, you know, so they make their money. Um. Old versus new. They did this ten percent somewhere, so they already lost.
Yeah, I mean, I think like just taking it up a little bit. You know, the goal of the, all the updates that we made last year was to really look. And we spent a lot of time doing it, was how and where. Are we going to be able to create the housing demand and the additional units and all of that? And so, you know, inadvertently within that process. We, you know, kind of took a step in the opposite direction with what Commissioner Kamkar has identified. So, you know, whether it's a couple dozen, that's the threshold for reconsidering it, you know. It's significant in that only looking at ten percent of the. Units in the city, it's already a couple dozen, it does take a bit of time, quite a bit of time to go through, but I think even the. The information that we have so far is worth taking this forward, but it is going to take a bit more time.
If I think, if I'm not mistaken, somewhere between, I think, I read somewhere there's forty two thousand parcels. I said I could be wrong, but you know, I mean, but.
There's, there's only seventeen thousand households. City, so I'm not quite sure. No, that's, that's households.
I understand, but 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 it's not just residential parcels.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not talking about.
It's just that to go from one by one. You know, you have to identify, you know. If the commercial, there is that show, if there, you know, retail, you know, what, actually, you have to identify that and then set aside. The ones that we're not looking at and just looking at the.
Yeah, I mean, I think part of it too is that the uh. Uh. The brush slot area, you know, basically the definition of what we call the brush slot area changed through the process of the updates. But the terminology wasn't adjusted. So during that process, I think that, you know, as a planning commission, we weren't, it wasn't um. Something that we considered because it didn't look like a difference, which is, you know, something that we probably could have. Thought and, you know, been more careful to consider. As we went through, but there are a lot of details in that, in the processes that we went through and everything that we reviewed, so, you know.
Yeah, but I I I, you know, I would take, I would take uh. The question of being inadvertent, based on what the, what the staff said. Last time we were here, what we're talking about this was, that that was. Not inadvertent, it was part of the plan that they submitted in terms of the general housing. And they took that into consideration. We reviewed it. Uh city council reviewed it. Um they made a conscious decision to change that, they made an upgrade in densities that made it, what I understand, if I remember properly, it's a wash. Made a lot that was wash between reducing the densities and and bringing up, uh reducing the the lot size. Uh the from center street to the curb. Um and then and then increasing the densities ended up being essentially Washington and the. So I don't think it was inadvertent, I think uh from what I heard from the staff, that that was. Uh viewed, looked at, presented and and the decision was made at the council.
Yeah, exactly, and I think the key thing is that the fact that the. Fact that it was considered a wash was an assumption without looking at the details and now we're looking at the details and understanding that. Depending on the configuration of the lot, it's actually not a wash. That's the point.
Well, it's it's a wash in terms of, maybe this person over here can't build as many units, but we're going to build more units over here. That's, that's how it it theory is going to work, so yes, maybe this, this parcel over here will not. Speculatively would not put this, be able to put as many units on it. Uh but that we're going to make up for it because we have these other higher density areas. Put in for residential, so that's how it gets balanced out.
If I can respond to that, it is not that this neighbor cannot, it's that this neighbor lost. Adoption, this neighbor had allocation and he lost it.
I understand.
Not that here's one neighbor, here's two neighbor, this got two more units, this one didn't get more units. I cannot.
No, I understand, but the wash means that something goes down, something else comes up and it balances out.
Yeah, but the wash was supposed to be on, we are recalculating the area of the lot because we're not taking the part that goes to the middle of the street. And we're also saying you can. The the number of units per gross acre is also going up. Not that some people get more and some people can get less, but now inadvertently, some people are getting less. So there's two problems, one, some people are getting less, but the bigger problem is that we should be able to build more units. And this change is making it so that we can't, this is like an unintended consequence when our goal is to build more units and we've defined. Ways for people to be able to do that.
Yeah, yeah, I would. I I I agree with, everything you guys said has crystallized what I, what I. From our last conversation. Well, that's all we were doing is. Uh. Thinking about if we want to recommend to the city council that they relook at something. That perhaps they really didn't look at, mostly because so much stuff was going on at one time. And I agree with Commissioner Zister that, that what Stephen Rose uh gave us a report last meeting, he did say that it was a wash, some were gaining, some were losing. But what you guys are saying now uh would really surprise me, yeah, if after all that we did, we actually went the other way, or taken away. And even, I think even a couple dozen units would make it, you know, would be relatively significant, it's a change that. We didn't mean to make and we we went wrong, the wrong ways to the right way, so I think, well, we're trying to do what I think, what I think. I mean, say so, what would your committee, your subcommittees try to do? Is to bring the details and the facts. That a planning commit, that we, our planning commission will first look at, say, yeah, you know, blah blah, yeah, this. We think that we should recommend to the city council that they should relook at this because this is what I think that's what we're probably doing, right?
I think you're exactly right and um we are a small city. So we want to have policies that favor your average, you know, homeowner. Not the big conglomerate, you know, developer coming in and, you know, and so. Uh and so we think in inadvertently, I still believe it's inadvertently. The situation that came up is it um disadvantages the, your mom and pop, you know. The versus the big conglomerate that comes out of it.
Well, that's the point, yeah, yeah.
You could make that point, exactly, yeah, and I think, you know, it's a progress update as. Uh Commissioner Kamkar said, you know, we heard from Commissioners Zister that we need to come back with more details, so we'll take that action and we will continue to work on it. Yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you for listening, thanks.
Thank you, yep.
Okay. Thank you for the report. Uh report to the community development director.
It's best, uh at last week's council meeting, uh council reviewed three items that were by the planning commission. Uh council approved the affordable housing overlay zones in by-range zoning districts, and those continue twice. As is, those do include uh fee reductions for deeply affordable housing projects, there was quite some discussion on that. Set this reduced the amount of work from PAC fees the city takes in. The zoning districts were approved. Uh two, the council approved the two thousand twenty four second development plan. The more I can develop manager less parts presented at some point. Uh if you had a chance, happy to pass on the link, it's a very robust document. If you looked at the city's previous second development plan, I think it was twenty pages, about two hundred fifty pages. A set of proposals on a vicious path. Stand it said development programs. And very happy to report, I think the commission would be interested in this, uh the council approved in tandem with that. Uh the code updates that did streamlining to multiple commercial uses, uh that was the result of the ad hoc committee. So uh good news on all that, very robust agenda last week. Uh two things associated with that, kind of self-serving, but I'll say them anyways. Uh the the city council acknowledged National Community Development Week, which is a national week, which was last week. And uh I'm happy to report, uh the city of Campbell Planning Division has been honored by the American Planning Association Northern California with the. Award of Excellence. Uh putting all that aside, uh I want to talk about two things, time and water, uh which can find a central place. So uh one is, I know I was speaking by a few commissioners, if there's an interest in changing the time. Uh so just to refresh the commission, the council has changed their start time from seven thirty to seven. I think they reserved the right to go back to seven thirty, but. Seven. If I have that. And so it's not mandated at all, there's fourteen commissioners to start all over the spectrum. Simple start, mission starts at five. But if the planning commission wanted to follow suit, uh we could absolutely do that. So that'd be the first question I'd ask through the chair, uh if there's an interest of the commission in formal planning. If there is, we bring back a resolution at your next meeting. And uh to back that to change your time. Uh probably answering a question you'd ask, was that mean for S A R, we probably move the start meeting up. Uh if it's a light agenda, I would can work with staff and the S A R commissioners if there's. If there's, uh if it's light, to to perhaps keep it closer to the planning commission, I'll just say one of those two doesn't. So anyways, I'll stop there and then just a light item after that, if you have feedback on the time.
Well, to me, it would be just a matter of whether or not there's a. A a majority of commissioners that are interested in, uh I I personally don't have a problem with coming in seven o'clock, it's fine with me.
At seven.
I don't, I don't work, so.
Like seven.
Does everybody?
He's fine.
My my kid goes to sleep at seven and wakes up like a farmer, so the earlier the better.
Yeah, yeah.
So there's a general consensus that seven would be fine for the planning commission, as far as S A R. You know, uh the only issue there is that, uh you know, you could do a half an hour S A R if you had one item. But I I think if you had a couple items, see, probably do six o'clock S A R, so that would be inconvenient for. So that would be inconvenient for, you know, pot, potentially six o'clock would be inconvenient for SARC members, but. I, I, I don't want, I know it's late. I don't want to get in a big discussion, but something that Commissioner Fields said earlier, and with our objective standards, et cetera. Is there even a need for SARC anymore? It's really my question. I don't know.
Great question. Yeah, I've asked this question to staff, because I've had this question in my mind many, many times. So I'll just say right now, it's in order to go, it's required and I, I think we're gonna take the opportunity of the next six months to a year to relook at its purpose and its relevance these days, but for the time being, it's still required.
It's a little redundant, you know, almost, you know, it's just.
I mean, for commercial projects, industrial projects, it makes sense.
Well, it's presently, it's presently required, yes. So it's just a matter of whether or not, you know, we have to deal with what we have to deal with right now.
It's a better process.
And if, if, if you're gonna look at it, that's, that'd be good, but, uh, you know, I, I I did SARC for a year and a half and you know, I don't know if, if it made a difference to get that input at that point from, from the commissioners or whether it was basically, you know, just, uh, the thing you go through. Yeah, I think everybody's been at SARC, right? Everybody, everybody's been at SARC, so. I just don't know myself as, as whether or not it's meaningful. Uh, I, I know that there's a few instances where I saw things that I brought up that I think as a result had to be, uh, dealt with, but I don't know how often that kind of thing happens.
So fair to say the commission's interested in the seven o'clock start? Okay. Judge that for the next meeting. Let, uh, Commissioner Skravsky, let's see if she has issues to pass on.
Let's just, we have a juice key.
I'm just.
You could also like.
I was like, hello. I had my invisibility.
Was there anything else?
Yeah, super small item. So the council has started on practice of not using single-use water bottles. And, uh, so it's just a.
That's good.
But, you know, passed that practice on the commission. Uh, so, uh, it's a tiny item, I guess.
Bring your, bring your, um.
Bring it, I'll bring my own.
It's very much a suggestion. Yeah, if you want truly sustainable, bring your own.
This will really help a lot to have a plastic cup.
E Y O.
Basically.
E Y O, that's a good idea.
It's a ramp process, so. We'd like to avoid the plastic cups, um, so if you're okay, bring it a cup or something like that, or keep it here. Your suggestion, we're just gonna feel through one. So that's it, you know, that's for our city clerk.
No B O Cs.
It's recycled. Where's one recycledness? It's up there.
Potable, it's potable water, Commissioner.
No, you know, they, they can take potable water out of wastewater. It's just, you know, and they're doing it, it's just not. I mean, there's lots of water available if you do that.
I don't think we had done this this night.
I know.
So, so we'll have cups if needed, but please bring your own.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody else have anything? Any comments, questions? All right, I, it's a meeting. Till, what's the next day? Thank you all.